7:15 PM. Council, please sign in.
You ought to be working on it.
All council members are present with the exception of Councilwoman Amy Holland and Councilwoman Renee Williams. My understanding is that we have got a great opportunity tonight. Troop 469, that's you guys, right?
Yes, sir.
I assume that. Come on down. You don't have to be in your seats. Come down up front here because you guys are going to help us out. You're going to work tonight. You don't get to come and have a free ride at council.
You can leave your stuff.
I'm going to start throwing some math problems at you. Uh-oh. No, I'm just teasing.
Who said...
What's line 12 of the Boy Scout code? No, I'm just... Come on down, scouts. Are there any other scouts in the room except for these gentlemen? Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts? No?
I'm going to present colors.
Well, you guys are presenting colors or no?
If you want us to, Mike, we can...
I thought that... I didn't know they were presenting colors, but if you guys want to present colors, you want to do that? Are we going to throw them on the spot and be like, "Uh-oh"?
They can do it.
All right, gentlemen, present the colors instead of doing the Pledge of Allegiance right off the bat. So, line up quickly, get your... Get the colors, present the colors, we'll do the pledge.
Which ones do you want, the big pledge?
No, the ones up front.
The ones up front.
Yeah. These ones don't move very good, so the ones right up front do.
Uh, we'll get the...
Or stay.
So, there's an American flag there, Colorado flag there.
Pull it up.
Yeah, if you guys want to bring them in from the back?
Yes, sir.
All right. It's like...
Okay, guys.
This is a test.
You're a test. Go on ahead.
Sir.
You are.
Josh, you need to sit on this side.
Hey, I've been assigned my seat for a long time.
Okay, the floor is yours, gentlemen.
Color guard attention. Council attention. Color guard, forward march. Scout salute. Please join in the same Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard, post the colors. Color guard, please, council.
Awesome.
Good job, guys.
On the fly even. Good job, guys. Way to go.
Yeah.
Good job. Fantastic. All right. Next up, Michelle, do we have any other special presentations tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay. Next on the agenda is our Parker Chamber of Commerce update from Mr. Houston. Come on down. Dennis, I don't know if you realized that at the ribbon cutting this week at the Harley dealership, when I introduced you, I in purpose put emphasis on Dennis Houston. And then how did you get introduced? Dennis Houston.
Houston, yeah. Yeah, I noticed that. Thanks for trying at least, I guess. Anyway, good evening, everyone, on this soggy Monday eve. Just a few cool updates from what's happening in the business community at the Parker Chamber of Commerce. On the fun side of things, we had our most recent wine walk a couple weeks ago. Had several hundred people downtown for that. Had a great crowd and a lot of... What we're noticing in the last two or three months, you know, the first few of this season, is that we have a lot of new people who are coming to it and a lot of people who are actually outside of Parker. So, it's kind of neat that we're exposing the business community to all those new patrons. So, we're pleased about that. Movies in the Park was scheduled for last Saturday evening. A little bit of rain and some strong winds kind of put the halt on that, so the National Night Out and the Movies in the Park was short-lived on Saturday. We have rescheduled one of our movies for September. We haven't had a great luck with Movies in the Park between rain and wind this year, so we have one coming up in September as a rain date or a wind date, I should say, from the June movie. A few things related to more the business side of things. Been involved in a lot of things related to workforce over the last several weeks, the last few months. It continues to be one of the number-one challenges we hear from the business community as far as the challenge they have with having enough workers. Some businesses would like to expand that can't, but they don't have enough workers to help fill that need. And you may have heard me use this analogy before, but I really compare the situation we have right now to a junior high dance. We have the business community on this side of the gym that's there that is in dire need of a workforce, and we have a lot of students and recent grads on the other side of the gym and people looking for employment that... And that are trying to find that job, either a school job or a part-time job or a full-time career. So, our goal and a lot of these efforts that we're working on behind the scenes is to try to bring those two groups to that middle of the dance floor, the middle of the gym floor, to introduce them and have that first dance, if you will. So, we're very pleased with some of the things we've been working on that we're hoping to announce this fall. Just one stat I will share with you in some of our conversations with Douglas County schools. When you look at the 5,000 students that graduated just from Douglas County Public Schools, that doesn't count the other schools in the area, but just from Douglas County School District, the 5,000 graduates in May, 30% or 1,500 of them don't have plans to go on to a two-year or four-year university. So, we have 1,500 kids that we're cranking out of the school district each year. If you look at all the kids that are currently in school, that's a workforce of 20,000 people that we're hoping to try to connect with the business community, especially when we look at some of the... It's all into the spectrums, but when we look at some specific areas in the trades, plumbing, construction, and some of those areas, there's some amazing job and career opportunities that we're hoping to introduce some of those guys to. We've been very involved with it at the... On the local level, trying to put some initiatives and programming together, but very much so at the national level, Level 2, through our National Chamber Association, our Hometown Chamber Council that I happen to chair. It's been our number-one priority this year as we're looking at sharing some ideas and solutions across communities and across state lines with what's worked in other communities our size. So, and at the state, Level 2, through our State Chamber Association, continue to work on that same thing. But we're confident with some of the education partnerships that we're building and strengthen upon some of those foundations we have, either with Douglas County School District, with Arapahoe Community College, our friends at CU Denver South, and Arapahoe Douglas Works. There's some cool things in the works, but help is on the way. We're just... We're getting close. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, questions? Nope. Dennis, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Stay dry.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, next up on our agenda is our Downtown Business Alliance update. Shelley is here from the DBA.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I apologize for not having a DBA update last month. I was out of town and I tried to find somebody to come in and anyways, it just didn't work out, so I apologize for no update in July. On a fun note, we have accomplished our fourth monthly fabulous First Friday Art Walk in downtown Parker under the lights. We moved across the street. Started off on the north side of Main Street for the first three months, added three more businesses onto the south side of Main Street, and our goal being to move, keep it moving even around in downtown Pike's Peak and down to Parker Station. We feel like we're gaining some momentum. We definitely need to continue to promote it, so thank you to Mayor Mike Wade as well for the contest. I don't know who won. Did you... Did you get a... Somebody that was a passerby that came through?
Yeah, we've got winners. I haven't announced them because one of them hasn't responded yet. So, if they don't respond, then I'll choose another.
Well, thank you for putting that out there to have, you know, people take selfies. You saw Teresa and I from Vines take a selfie, but we said we didn't count. I know. I know. So, anyway, so we were super excited about the art walks. If you... If anyone knows about First Friday Art Walks, they are all across the nation, some really prominent ones here in Colorado as well, and we'd like to get Parker on the map. And the coolest thing that I heard on Friday night was two ladies that came from Evergreen, and they came just to come to Parker for the art walk. And they had read it somewhere in a magazine, in art walks, or in social media or something, and I thought, "Wow, that's pretty neat. Get two ladies from Evergreen to come walk around our lovely downtown." So, we're excited to continue to keep this momentum going, so keep looking for our art walks on the first Friday of every month. Lots of business to cover really quick. We voted in a nine-person board to oversee the DBA. I am now considered the chair instead of the president. We have a vice chair. His name is Chris Schnell. He's from Cogent Advisors. He's a business owner of Cogent Advisors. Treasurer Todd Snyder of the Snyder CPA Firm. Our secretary is Andrew Roth of the Parker Library, and five voting members representing various businesses and buildings in DTP. We're trying to get the lingo, DTP, downtown Parker, hashtag DTP. Yumi of Indoshin, Jeff Sams of United Country Realty, Karen Shane of Main Street Flower Market, Jeff Holland of Rory's Diner, and then we have a community representative that we felt was a great way to have an outside viewpoint with our board and give us their outside perspective, non-business owner of downtown Parker, and his name is Todd Hendricks. Some of you might know him. He's a social media guru and has a great perspective on how to grow the downtown area. We have filled out our application to become a 501(c)(6) and have opened up our bank account with Omar. Many of you know him at Community Banks of Colorado. We will send in the application when we receive enough membership dues, which we're hoping at our DBA meeting on Wednesday, that everybody comes to that meeting with their membership dues and we can cover the fee for our 501(c)(6). If anyone knows any business owner in DTP that may not know about our DBA, please have them find me on Facebook and have them message me, and I will be sure to get a membership and DBA flyer out to them so that they can come and join. So, I wanted to show you a few things. Let's see, do you have this? Can I turn this on really quick? Just a real quickie-quickie.
There you go. Flip it around. There you go. Yep.
Is this the way to do it?
Yep.
Okay. So, just bottom line is, this is through a few, quite a few edits. We have come up with what we call our Downtown Business Alliance Membership Flyer, what's in it for you, you know, why would you want to join the DBA? It has all the benefits and the commitment. Couldn't be easier. So, I just, you know, wanted to make sure you saw that we are taking this very seriously. We're... All the businesses are going to start handing this out to any business that has not been attending our DBA and just say, "Welcome, you know, I know you've been here for quite a few years. We haven't seen you around any of our DBA meetings, but we certainly would love for your participation," and this shows the benefits of that. We also have put together on the back of this flyer a DBA, what we consider our DBA boundaries, if you will, our Downtown Business Alliance boundaries, so it identifies where you would fit and what makes sense right now for us, and it could be ever-changing. We may open it and expand it as we see maybe Parker expand as well, but the primary focus clearly is from, you know, Parker Road to Victorian, to Pine Drive and everywhere in between there down to Sulphur Gulch. So, just wanted to show you that. Our June meeting, we handled all of our official business and voting. We also had three board meetings between last time I gave an update. We've had three board meetings to solidify our bylaws, our mission statement, et cetera, and get that... So, we're ready to have that 501(c)(6) submitted. We already have it ready to go. We're just waiting to make sure we have enough membership dues to pay for the application. Our July meeting, we were honored to have Jim and Dennis from the Parks and Rec to provide us updates on what's new in Parker. Our meeting this upcoming Wednesday, which is Wednesday morning, we have Chris Hudson from our town as well, and his team will be our guest speakers to give us updates on public works. All of our business owners in downtown Parker really love connecting and hearing about what's happening in the town of Parker government and what's new as well, so it's a great alliance right there. Last, but not least, I just wanted to share one last thing. We are expected to have a regional relay at O'Brien Park, and it's the Relay for Life on September 30th. This is sponsored by the American Cancer Society. It's a great opportunity for our DBA businesses in the town of Parker to connect and host this great event. It's the first time it's been in O'Brien Park. It's a 12-hour event from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM on September 30th. It'll be all around O'Brien Park, and we're trying to, as an event, as a great cause, you know, to fight cancer, to get people involved, all of our businesses, because in the past, it's been down either at Tallman Park, away from all of our businesses. It's always been someplace else that the relay happens. Now, we have so much great exposure for having all these teams come down here and spend the entire day here because they're not always walking the entire time or running. They're actually moving away from their team and they get an opportunity now to go see, go have coffee, go shopping, go do something too, right, in downtown Parker, and then go back to O'Brien Park, you know, because they're there for so long. I personally have been touched many times by cancer with my family and friends, and the American Cancer Society is one of my biggest support, you know, nonprofits that I support, so I've got involved in this event this year, and I just wanted to ask if I could put this out there. One last thing, because we're trying to get all the businesses involved in downtown Parker, is to paint the town purple in the month of September after Labor Day. Let's paint the town purple, and the event, like I said, is 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM on September 30th. This is an example of what Highlands Ranch businesses did on their windows, window displays of businesses, and we are asking buildings and businesses to paint them, you know, turn lights on that are purple if they can, and we're wondering if the town would allow us for the Relay for Life, since I'm involved with this as well, is to hang or to tie up purple bows on all the lamp posts on Main Street and the gates maybe up and down after Labor Day is over and until the event is over, just to really gain some awareness of fighting, you know, fighting cancer, and the relay is right in our downtown area. So, that's my last request. Does anybody have any questions?
Council, any questions? Nope.
All right. I like that. It's a good idea.
Paint the town purple. Okay.
I love purple.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate it. All right, next item up on our agenda is a public comment. This is an opportunity for you to come address council. There is a three-minute time limit on public comment. No action will be taken at this time. It's just an opportunity for you to give input, will take notes on what it is. If you're here for a specific item that is on the agenda, there will be public comment at that point for that agenda item. So, this is just general public comment for things that are not on our agenda. There is a clock you can see above me here. I can see one on the other side there that says three minutes. When you come up, you'll state your name and address, and then the clock starts. When it gets to three minutes, just forewarning, you know, we'll go ahead and say thank you very much and move on to the next person. And so, with that, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:34 PM if there's anyone here to address council. Come on down. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Terry Vossberg. I live at 12224 South Season Court in Parker. That's in the Idlewild neighborhood and... Okay. I'm here to address the council for a request on residents on Season Court. I live in the Idlewild subdivision next to the Legend High School. I've been a Parker resident for three years, and I personally lived through two years of the Legend High School parking issues. My problem statement is Legend High School does not have enough parking for its students. When this happening, the parking... When this happens, the parking overflow runs into our neighborhood parks, our common areas, our local business, and our neighborhoods. It's dangerous, it's a nuisance, and it's not fair to the residents that live and pay taxes in the Idlewild area. Some background is Idlewild neighborhood was designed for neighborhood, normal public traffic, and today, there's no problem with any of our public parking and traffic issues. The neighborhood infrastructure is just fine. The Idlewild was never designed to become the Legend High School overflow parking lot. Normally, the high school parking lot problem doesn't surface until the spring because that's when new drivers get their license, and there's no room at the high school for their parking. This year is going to be different. We're told it's going to be different. The juniors and the soph... Or the sophomores are not going to be allowed to park in the high school, so that means the parking is going to overrun into the neighborhood starting in about a week. I'm here to ask for your help with that problem. Season Court, you might ask, "Why is Season Court's residents asking for help?" Well, first of all, we live in a quiet cul-de-sac, and it is next to the high school. It's a mixed community in that cul-de-sac. We have about 30% young children that live and play and run in the streets. We have also a handicapped person in the street that needs quick access to the street in his van. When we don't have the high schoolers parking on our street, we have no problem with the public parking. Contractors can get there, our family and friends can park there, no issues. When the high schoolers start parking on our street, now I have students speeding down the street, and they're in a hurry to get to class. They come in and out of the street multiple times during the day because Legend has their open campus policy, and they take up all the street parking, so even I can't park on the street, and I live there. So, basically, we have new drivers, they're in a hurry, they're showing off to their peers. We have young children playing in the area, and we have some, a handicapped person that can't even park in front of his house because there's no open parking for him to get to his van. So, my point to the council is that we don't have a public parking issue. We just... We're just not designed in Idlewild to be one of the high school parking lots. We know that. The problem is this other areas, Chaparral High School. Solve this problem by letting the adjacent neighborhood have permit parking. It's one solution. So, I ask you today to please try to help us in any way you can. Talk to the student council or to the school board, work with us on permit parking, but please help us find a solution because we've tried for years and we're not getting anywhere, and it's going to get worse in a week. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay. Next up for public comment? Scouts? Public comment? Look at the... See all the heads? Go see if anyone's going to jump. No? All right, we'll close public comment at 7:38 PM. Move to reports, items, and comments for mayor and council. Mr. Martin?
I don't have anything this evening.
Mr. Rivera, anything happen recently?
I just got home from somewhere abroad. I truly appreciate my time off. Obviously, I give a lot to this town. It's nice to get away, but it is even nicer to come home. I love my town, and I'm very, very, very happy to be home and be amongst my friends and family, so thank you.
Okay. Debbie?
Several things. We had the partnership of Douglas County Government met at, fortunately, at the Parker Library, because that's the one that meets at 7:00 AM. I don't know if you all got this downloaded, but this is the county survey that came out. Castle Rock also did not present that day, but they had their survey available for us. It is online. Anyone can look at those. But with all the jurisdictions there, not only what the counties and prints said, it seems that everyone has about at the top of their list, the same common interest, and that is transportation. The talk around the table that day was that we, with federal funding being cut and no help from the state, that we are probably going to be looking at some type of subcommittee of the partnership to look specifically at transportation issues here in Douglas County that we may be able to come to some resolutions on. That being said, I also had Douglas County Housing Partnership that... Just two quick things. There was between the first of the year and now, there's been one new amortized loan, and nine of the loans have been paid off. The shared equity loans, there's been four new ones out and two that are paid off. One of the... And this is just kind of a sidebar. One of the members of that organization is a council member from Loan Tree, and they were talking about the flyover that had been completed, and I said, "How much did that cost to go over Lincoln?" And in case anybody is wondering if we could do something, like it was an $8 million little walkway bridge that goes from the south side of Lincoln to the north side of Lincoln over there, just in case you were wondering. Also, this afternoon, via phone and myself in person, Renee Williams and I had our first liaison meeting with Human Resources and also Parks and Rec. So, two quick things on that is that with... In the HR department, we have had 225 applications for that position. It's been narrowed down to 15 that have entered with interviews. Looks like it'll go from 15 to eight and then to two, just as a quick update. One of the things that is coming to fruition, it looks like, we will be coming before us on August 21st for first reading, is the... Is our indoor tennis partners across the street or just adjacent, not across the street, just adjacent west of the fieldhouse. So, that's something to keep in. It's... Looks like it's going to happen after six years. The master plan for Parks and Recs is underway, and they're teaming up with the planning department for that. It's a 10-year plan. They're hoping to have that completed, you know, in the next short while. Also, they are... The Parks and Recs Department is going for their accreditation. There's 151 standards that have to be met. There's 1% of all Parks and Recs in the United States that have an accreditation, so 65 have been completed of that 151 already, with about 30 almost ready to go. So, that'll be something really exciting when that is completed. With Councilman Rivera and Dyak and Holland, we were on Saturday afternoon, connect with council, which is in conjunction with Night Out and the Movie in the Park that didn't happen, but...
Were you wearing a raincoat?
We...
No.
We had to quickly close up because we did not, and kudos to Brooke for the fast action that she took because not just the rain, but a lightning storm showed up. I participated in the First Friday Art Walk. It was very successful. I contributed some to the bottom lines of people. I worked at the Wine Walk. I attended the ribbon cutting for the Harley re-grand opening. What they've done there with the outside architecture as well as the interior is amazing, and I think that's all.
Okay. John?
Wow.
It was a lot.
Across the couples off my list, too. I attended a cultural commission meeting with Councilmember Holland, who's not here. We welcomed a few new members in, and we were prepping for the Honey Festival, which happened Sunday, and I was there, and it looked like it was a fantastic attendance. It was just a great event, and kudos to Diane Roth and her citizens on the Cultural Commission. I'm a Dr. Cog Board Member, had a couple meetings in the interim. We're focusing on potential relocation of our workplace as well as some transportation funding. What we're trying to do is we're trying to get more federal money down to the subregion or the county level so we can potentially solve some of the problems that Councilmember Lewis was talking about. Thursday night concerts, we've had some issues with rain. We had, I guess, sort of a concert cut short and a concert postponed, so that was kind of a challenge along with National Night Out. And I was at the Mile High Harley Davidson Ribbon Cutting Event. That was a fantastic event, you know, really has created something vibrant in a part of what I call Old Parker. So, it should be a fantastic, fantastic future for them, and looking forward to the Chamber of Business Impact Meeting on the 10th Thursday.
All right.
I forgot one thing.
Oh.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I am one of the council member, Williams and myself are liaisons to PARAC, which is the Advisory Board to PAR. I attended that meeting last week or week before last. It was... or week before last. It was a lengthy meeting. I have to say that that is a very dedicated group of people with some real plans for what they see happening, good things, and they are working on specifically a logo that, that they were going to be using for that group. So it, it was, it was an outstanding meeting, and I don't often say that.
Cool. All right. Most of the things that I have, too, you guys have already covered. First Friday Art Walk was great. It's always fun to go and see that downtown Parker. The Honey Festival was pretty cool. Ribbon cutting at the Harley Davidson, that John hit it on the head. It's great to take a property in an area that was definitely underutilized and put something that is not only beautiful and cool to go into, but something that attracts people from outside of Parker to come in and make major purchases with. I didn't participate in it, but I was there at the first ever human touching the water at Ruder Hess Reservoir Open Swim Race. My wife participated in it, and what was there, a hundred and fifty-eight swimmers, something like that? And the overwhelming thing I heard from everyone was, it was incredible how crisp and clean the water was. It was a great opportunity for, to see how an event like that could run, and I don't know the back logistics. I hope, it seemed to go off really smooth and everyone seemed to have a great time, so I hope that's more to come in that side. On this weekend, I received a pie in the face from Douglas County Libraries at Discovery Park. They do a summer reading program for kids every year, and this year the payoff was that if the kids in Parker read, I think it was seven hundred and fifty thousand minutes worth of books, that I would get a pie in the face. And I think they ended up reading like 1.2 million minutes. So it was pretty cool to get a pie in the face for that. I got to judge the Dutch Oven Cook-Off, and I know that has lots of meaning, so Dutch Oven Cook-Off at Douglas County Fairgrounds this weekend with the mayor of Larkspur, mayor of Lone Tree, mayor of Castle Rock, and the mayor pro tem of Castle Pines, and that was a fun event. I was also on a online stream broadcast of innovation in government this last week, and talked about two ways that Parker has been innovative for our citizens. One, our Smart Parks Program and what that is and what it means. And two, our Active Development Map, which is available to our citizens online at ParkerOnline.org, where you can click into it and see a map of Parker, and there are little pinpoints for every active development application that's going on in the town. You click one of them and it'll drill down and show you where it's at in the process. You can see renderings if they've been submitted and interact with that data. It is the ultimate in innovative transparency for our citizens. Those watching on Facebook, if you haven't done it yet, go to ParkerOnline.org and find the Active Development Map. It is absolutely innovative and unique and a really cool tool. Everyone should have it bookmarked. Most of the questions we get is, what's going on on this corner, or what's being built here, what's, what can be built here? That's the place to go to see what active developments are in process. And then I also had the Metro Mayor's Caucus meeting this last week as well. I meet with the other forty-two mayors every two months, and we discuss issues that are facing the region. So it's been a busy, busy time. So with that.
Was it a chocolate pie?
Was it? No, it was, it's, I mean, it's not a real pie. It's like just whipped cream. Yeah.
Was it just one, too?
They had two pies, but they couldn't do one because the corners of the pie plate had aluminum, had curled up, and they were worried that it was going to cut my face when they smacked me with it. So they used the other one. And then if you have a beard and you've ever been hit with whipped cream in the face, no matter how many times you shower for the next twenty-four hours, you kind of smell like whipped cream and dairy. And so, yeah, it was the things you do for the kids.
Might mention the Friday announcement thing.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. So this Friday, at the State Capitol, I will be joining the governor, our county commissioners, and others to formally announce a project that the town of Parker is blessed to have coming to it. A group called Red Bar is going to be developing in Parker, north of 470 in the Com Park area. The country's first major motion picture and television studio that is built from digital, from the ground up. So there will be a backlot for major motion pictures production, all the way down to TV production here in Parker in the next three years. What makes it unique is that every other movie facility in the country has been, was built some time ago and is basically analog. So they, they, they process the movies in an analog format and then convert them to digital and then send them off. In other parts of the world, like Vancouver, for instance, the reason Vancouver gets so many major motion picture projects is because they have a, from the ground up, digital facility, and it saves movie production companies a fair amount of money to stay digital through the whole process. It's a very unique project that's coming to Parker. When asked why they chose this area, there were three reasons I was given. One was the proximity to Centennial Airport, because those ritzy-ditzy Hollywood movie stars don't like to fly into DIA. They like to fly in on private jets and not have to intermingle with the rest of us. And with the proximity to Centennial, which is, I believe, the largest, the largest volume private airport in the country, that's a big selling point. Another point is that a lot of people don't realize that there are only, I think, four or five east-west high data connections that go across the nation, and one of them goes across that area. Liberty Media, I think, ties into that one. And third, they specifically told me, was because of the quality of life and culture that we have in Parker and the area, that that's what they want their employees to be able to experience and build out their anticipating employment base of around four thousand people in that area just north of 470. So it's a fantastic project for the town of Parker.
Excuse me. One thing just to add to that is, one of the big pieces they're going to have with that is a lot of internship opportunities for both high school and local college students that may want to go into some of those industries. So there will be a large partnership with, with education, both at the high school and college level for that as well, which is, which is a huge win. I think, Dennis, you mentioned there's fair amount of students around these parts, so should be some opportunities for them as well.
Definitely. There's a lot of innovation going on there. They want to be a, an emissions neutral campus, so there's a lot of cool things that they have going on. But anyway, so that's coming up. Next item up is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote unless a council member asks to have an item removed for further discussion. So with that, council, I would entertain further discussion or a motion on consent agenda items 7A through 7D.
So moved to second.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from John. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item up on our agenda is our Town Administrator's Report.
Mayor and council, actually, I have a couple of things. One is, I had the pleasure last Saturday of being invited to participate in CU's Public Service Weekend Conference. It was the CU Denver School of Public Affairs and the Public Policy and International Affairs Program. It was a special conference that was open to college students from across the United States. They had eighty applicants and they selected twenty-five for the program. There were fifteen different states represented. Actually, there was no one from Colorado there, but it was a good mix of other areas. I was asked to facilitate their team policy critical thinking workshop.
Wowzers.
Which, Danette Robertson in my office was one of the people who organized it with the City Managers Association to host that seminar. It was a great opportunity. The college students that were there were all ones who were underrepresented in colleges around the US as being minorities, or financial barriers, or first-generation college students. So it was a great opportunity. The other thing I got to attend last week was Governing Magazine's Leadership Forum. It was downtown. There was about, probably about two hundred government professionals there and had a wide variety of guest speakers, including Governor Hickenlooper and Major General Borling. So it was very interesting. It was a great seminar. There was probably about ten of us who attended it from the town.
Sweet.
Thank you.
All right. Awesome. All right. Next item up on our agenda is item number nine. This is ordinance number 3.30 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend Section 13.02.010 of the Parker Municipal Code and to amend Title 13 of the Parker Municipal Code by the addition thereto of a new chapter 13.16 concerning preliminary site plan standards and procedures. Paul, you're going to lead us tonight.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's nice to be here this evening. As was just stated, the request this evening is the creation of a preliminary site plan process, ordinance number 3.330. A little bit of background and context for the request this evening is that currently within the town of Parker, a site plan application is required to be submitted with a hundred percent of the design complete. This requires significant investment from the private side. It creates a rigid process for both sides, and then it makes it difficult to revise plans to meet the town's standards. The request to help rectify this is to allow for an optional administrative process called the preliminary site plan. It would be similar to a sketch and preliminary plan for residential development whereby the applicant would receive approval of thirty percent design for a two-year period for non-residential type development. There's really, the benefits to, to the town, the first two bullets there, is it will allow for the identification of issues early in the development review process, and then help us facilitate changes in those plans to help meet town standards. From the development side, it allows applicants to gauge demand, pre-lease their tenant space, obtain funding, respond to different market cycles, things like that. The preliminary site plan will not constitute a right to build. An applicant would still need to pursue final site plan and ultimately their approved building permit, which would give them then the right to build. Terms of responses, the responses have been positive from the referral agencies. They also have indicated support of being able to identify issues and problems and challenges early in the process prior to the applicant going through and making significant investment in their design. With that, staff recommends, and the Planning Commission voted five to zero on July 13th, to recommend to town council the approval of ordinance number 3.330 to create a preliminary site plan process. That would conclude staff's presentation. However, we certainly are available for any questions you all may have.
Awesome. Paul, thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions?
No.
No?
John?
Yeah. Thank you, mayor. Paul, is this, is this something that's preliminary consistent with other municipalities? Are other people doing this as well?
The short answer to that is yes. A lot of municipalities don't, every municipality is different. The ability to get a preliminary approval would not be unique to Parker.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
No? We'll open it up for public comment at 7:58 PM. If there's anyone here to address council on this item? Scouts, preliminary site plan? Is that one of your chapters? Is there a badge for that?
No.
No? Not that you remember?
[laughing]
All right.
Mr. Mayor, we can create one if that.
[laughing] If you have a question, truthfully, you can come down, young man, if you want to, if you have a...
I'd rather not come down there, but...
Oh, we, we got it. We got to do it through the process, though, buddy. But you should. This is an opportunity. If you have a question, you know, this is the, so when you come on up, if you'll state, come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You're going to see that timer above me start when you start talking, and you've got three minutes.
Okay.
Name and address first.
Hi. My name is Liam McKissick, or Lloyd A. McKissick IV, Lloyd A. McKissick IV. My address is 8180 East Lightningview Drive, Parker, Colorado. Okay. So what exactly is the preliminary site plan? Is it basically people need to have a very set in stone plan for what they're going to build beforehand, and you're trying to make it so that that can be easily changed?
Okay. Is that your question? Because what we'll do is, when you get through all the questions, then we'll go through and answer them.
That's first question. Second question is, would this make it easier or more difficult to add new structures and buildings to our town? I think that's about it.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? Name and address for the record, please.
Dennis Houston, 195, excuse me, 19590 East Main Street, Parker, Colorado. I just would like to applaud town staff and, and mayor and council for, for looking at this. I think our goal always in our community, as our community continues to thrive and grow, is to see what is, how is it easier to do business in our community? And that's one thing, having spent time in other communities, that process is always challenging for businesses that are looking for, you know, a new project. And I think something like this really allows that cost savings on the front end. And so I applaud you for, for looking at doing this. I think it could make a huge difference for people even looking at Parker in the process. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dennis. Anyone else for public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:00 PM. Dennis was a statement. Thank you very much. There's not really anything to address there. Liam, first off, thanks for coming down. Should never be afraid to come down and address your elected body. This is your council, baby. You know, come on down anytime you have questions or want clarification on something. So your first question was, what is a preliminary site plan? What does it really mean? And then, does it make it easier or more difficult for someone to develop in the town of Parker? So basically, the way, what this does is this helps staff alleviate one of the, the roadblocks or congestion points. The way the law is written right now is for you to submit an application, and please correct me if I say this wrong, for you to submit an application, you have to have a one hundred percent complete application, including design based on what you think the rules of the law state. What often happens is you submit that, and then staff reviews it and goes, oh, there's something you've got wrong here, and you have to go back and get it changed, right? Which isn't a bad thing, except you've invested a lot of money and a lot of time to get to that point. Whereas with this change, if this change is approved tonight by council, then you would be able to, at a thirty percent completion time, come in and kind of submit your plans, and they can say ahead of time, before you've invested a lot of money and resources into it, saying, hey, bright pink fluorescent lights are not allowed in the town of Parker, so don't put that in your plan. Well, you won't develop, you won't put that in your plan then at that point. So that helps that process along. Your question of, does it make it easier or more difficult to develop in the town of Parker, that's kind of a, a question that could kind of go either direction, because one of the things you have to remember, if you own a piece of land in the town of Parker and it's zoned for commercial development, and this is only applying to commercial development, not residential, commercial development, if the piece of land you own is zoned for commercial development, that's called a use by right, which means you have the legal right to build commercial on that lot. We can't tell you, no, you can't build commercial. We can only tell you, you have to follow the town's code as to how that commercial is built. And by giving you the ability to partner with us earlier on, to figure out if you're building something that, want to build something that meets code, makes it an easier process, for sure.
Very well articulated, mayor.
What's that?
Very well articulated.
All right. Thank you very much. Bonus. Cool. All right. Public comment closed at 8:02 or whenever it was PM. Counsel, do you have any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.330 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda, item number 10, is ordinance number 9.267 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance approving the agreement regarding design and construction of drainage and flood control improvements for Cherry Creek at the KOA property town, at the KOA property, Town of Parker Agreement number 17-05.19, project number 106722, buy-in between Urban Drainage and Flood Control District and the Town of Parker. Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Like you said, tonight we have before you an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Parker and the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District for design of improvements to Cherry Creek, and we're calling it along the KOA property. The agreement is a fifty percent cost share between the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District and the Town of Parker. The project is eligible for urban drainage funding since it's an improvement identified in the Cherry Creek Master Plan. Urban Drainage and Flood Control District approved the funding request and is prepared to contribute $65,000, and the town's stormwater budget for 2017 includes this as a capital improvement project for $65,000 as the fifty percent match. The project reach begins at the southern part of the McCabe Meadows Trailhead. It goes through the Salisbury Park property, and then adjacent to that, to the north, is the KOA property, and then it'll wrap up around the Bar CCC Augmentation Reservoir. The Town of Parker and Urban Drainage and Flood Control District and Douglas County recently completed a capital improvement project just upstream of this or to the south, extending from Hess Road to the McCabe Meadows Trailhead. And as a part of that project, we, we noticed when we were tying in at the downstream end at the McCabe Meadows Trailhead, there was some bank erosion occurring through the McCabe Meadows area, and that kind of put it on the radar for taking out this next chunk of Cherry Creek. So as you can see in the picture, we're looking upstream, so it's the river left bank that you're looking head-on. We've got about a three-foot headcut right at the bank there. And if you can look into the picture... And if you can look into the picture a little bit closer, there's a couple whitewater riffles. Those are sure-tail signs of bank erosion or channel erosion and headcutting, so it's actively cutting down. If approved, the design will start in twenty seventeen and be completed in early twenty eighteen. The engineering consultant will provide a detailed cost estimate for construction and we will amend this agreement to include construction in late twenty eighteen and it'll be a cost share between urban drainage and the town as well. The, the channel and bank stabilization will also be designed through the KOA property, like I had mentioned, and part of that design is in anticipation of future development through that property and roadway crossing in the future, too, to make sure that we've got everything we need for future roadway crossings and future development in the corridor. So this project will provide an engineering design for the stability of the Cherry Creek Channel, reduce erosion and sediment transport downstream. It is eligible for urban drainage maintenance assistance in the future and it provides an engineering design for improvements through the KOA property to inform development obligations through the reach. So with that, staff recommends approval of ordinance number nine point two six seven and I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Jacob?
Nope.
Is that a statement? I just, kudos to staff for identifying, obviously, I see a lot of this sitting on Cherry Creek Waterboard and I think that the, the biggest one, Plum Creek, just allowed to run freely and now it's millions and millions of dollars in rehabilitation. You can't stop water and if you don't help the creek, it will go wherever it can go and eventually it just erode the whole bank and as the sediment falls into the creek, it creates nightmares downstream, so kudos, kudos, grabbing it early before it causes a whole, whole nightmare.
Absolutely. Okay. We'll open it up for public comment at eight oh seven PM if there's anyone here to address council on this item. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at eight oh seven. I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
Move to approve ordinance nine dot two six seven on second reading.
Second. Motion by Josh Martin, second by John Dyack. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item number eleven. This is ordinance number one dot four eight zero dot three on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to approve the third amendment to agreement for sale and purchase of the land by and between the Town of Parker and ACG LLC concerning the Jim property. Weldy?
Good evening. So the Jim property, also lovingly referred to as the future Parker Tap House and Distillery. We are very close in getting their building permits approved. We just have a couple outstanding approvals. So we did not make our original July thirty-first deadline, so I'm asking if we can extend the agreement to September thirtieth for the purchase and sale of that property. Again, what we are waiting for is the building permit approval. To do that, we need a grading permit still approved as well as final approval from Parker Water. We're close. We're just waiting on getting that thumbs up from Parker Water, hopefully. So that is why we're extending. Again, we're not changing any of the original terms of the purchase price, it's just the date of September thirtieth that we need to have all the requirements completed by in order to close on the property and sell it. So staff does recommend approval of ordinance number one dot four eight zero dot three on second reading and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Weldy. Counsel, any questions?
Can you give us a little more details on the holdup from Parker Water? What are they looking at?
Um, we had to, and again, not really the smartest when it comes to the whole engineering public works thing, but there was some routing with a loop, I believe, for the fire hydrants that we were kind of back and forth on how we wanted that routed. That got worked out, so now they just need to approve those drawings and then we'll have to have some easements put in place for, for the additional water line.
Excellent, thank you.
John?
Thanks. Weldy, what's, what's the timeline of this Tap House? Would this delay their timeline to, to get open or do we have access?
This, this has delayed, delayed it because we were hoping to have the project up and going before July thirty-first. I can't imagine, unless we hear something different from Parker Water, that we're not a couple weeks, week, two weeks away from being able to get their portion wrapped up and get the grading permit done. That then we can sell and they're pretty ready to break ground as soon as they, they possibly can. So they still want to break ground this fall and then they're estimating about ten months for construction.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Other questions, counsel? Nope? We'll open it up for public comment at eight ten PM if there's anyone here. John Fusa, were you moving or were you just, I don't know if you're, okay, you're not going to come down and just wait a little?
Citizen Fusa.
Citizen Fusa? All right. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at eight ten PM and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number one point four eight zero point three on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Debbie and a second by Josh. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before council, we will recess at eight eleven PM and council will reconvene their executive session in just a few moments. Thank you all for coming.